Okay. Thank you. I'm going to call a special meeting of the Board of Alderman to order on Tuesday, August 12, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber, which has been duly noticed in two places, including the city's website, in accordance with the requirements of RSA 91A. Tonight's prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy, and Alderman Tebow will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Just want to make an announcement that if you're here for the zoning board, that's upstairs. Otherwise, you're good. Okay, if we could start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yeah.
Alderman Moran.
Here.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Senate.
Here.
Alderman Jettie. Alderman Tebow.
Yeah.
Alderman Klee.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here. I'm attending remotely due to medical reasons. I'm alone in this room, and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Wilshire.
Here.
Thirteen present, two absent.
Thank you. I did hear from Alderman Lopez, who won't be joining us tonight, and Alderman Jettie, who is on vacation. Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donchus and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Tonight, we are starting off with a presentation on capital projects, and I'm going to recognize Administrative Services Director Tim Cummings.
Thank you, Madam President. May Treasurer and I approach.
Yes.
Thank you. So, good evening. For the record, Tim Cummings, Director of Administrative Services, and with me is Treasurer Dawn Enright. And let me see if I can start this slideshow here. Here we go. So, just a quick couple opening remarks, hoping to keep this update casual and try to have it be a little bit more of a discussion while also providing the body with some updates and some details relative to our capital planning that we have been undertaken specifically since we've met relative to the ad hoc committee process. And so, the purpose of the discussion tonight is to provide a high-level overview of the capital project planning through the lens of our ad hoc joint mayoral and Board of Alderman Committee on Capital Expenditures and Debt Service. And so, before we continue, I'm going to ask Treasurer Enright to kind of just go over where we're at relative to existing debt.
Thank you. Dawn Enright, Treasurer, Tax Collector. So, in front of you here is an outline of what our debt obligation is for the next 20 years, and the one thing that I wanted to point out is that year over year, it is declining because some of the debt is maturing from previous years. So, the reason for this presentation is so that you can see that there is capacity each year to be able to issue new debt so that we can keep our budget at a consistent level year over year.
Thank you. So, a couple highlights. Through the ad hoc process, it was generally agreed to and understood that new debt sales would hover around $25 million per year over a five-year period. The work we did culminated in IR 24077, but it's probably worth noting that these plans are living documents. They're not static by any means, and they're subject to changes. And so, that's one of the reasons why we're here this evening, to make sure that we're all understanding where we're at relative to our plans and provide you the details you need so we can update these plans and be able to chart a course forward. The goal is to try to keep a stable debt service year over year. So, understanding that what our existing debt is, how much new debt we can layer in, while also being mindful of our operating budget and trying to keep a stable debt service is the goal. Lastly, this update hovers more on our financial planning relative to capital. It is not project-specific. If you have a project-specific related question or a project-specific, well, a project in general that you'd like to hear about, I'd suggest you come to the August 27 Infrastructure Committee meeting, where we will be giving just a general update. And if there's a specific project in mind that you'd like to hear about, please let me know. I'll work with Chairman O'Brien to incorporate that into our plans. We know the Riverfront is one of high interest. Walnut Street Oval is another one. I'm sure there are others, so please let me know so we can incorporate that in to our planning. So, relative to bonding for upcoming projects, and as Treasurer Enright had noted, we have developed what we have authorized and forecasted out over a five-year horizon. We've also made some assumptions based off of the work we've done previously to, in theory, develop what it would be to also authorize additional debt over that five-year period and make sure we layer it in accordingly. We're not looking for any official direction this evening. This is more of an opportunity to discuss, provide you with some details, have you formulate your ideas, and later on, as we continue this effort, we would be looking for more formal direction from you all. And so, with that being said, based off of the prior work we did, we had identified some projects as imminent, and that was the DPW Garage, which is currently under design. We have Holman Stadium, which is a repair renovation. We have the Mohawk Tannery Pedestrian Bridge that's coming about. As we know, we have the hydroelectric improvements underway. Two different type of projects, but of very important, of importance, and that's for maintaining our capital assets. It's building in some sort of amount of money for deferred capital maintenance. We know Fire has just completed a plan and looking to authorize about $1.5 million a year in debt so they can focus on HVAC repairs. Similarly, with schools, they're undertaking their facility study now, but we programmed in about $2 million a year for miscellaneous projects for that, just to try to have a placeholder so we could plan accordingly. And then, some other reoccurring items that we need to keep in the back of our mind, unless given direction that these aren't priorities anymore, we need to also make sure that we're accommodating both the paving program and vehicle and equipment replacements. And so, based off of, you know, what we did during the ad hoc process and what we've identified, we've taken these projects and we've added them into our planning. But some other projects we identified during that ad hoc process that needed some additional community engagement, some additional guidance, some further study, were various projects that we have outlined for you here that is worth you all giving us direction as to how you'd like us to prioritize these projects when we have available capacity within our debt service plan. They go from everything from the Mount Pleasant Elementary School renovation to Keith Auditorium to Court Street Theater Project to Riverside Athletic Fields, a brand-new fire station, a low-barrier shelter, the railroad project, that's IE Passenger Rail, City Hall renovation, an ERP system upgrade, police cell booking area, some branding and wave-finding, miscellaneous New Hampshire Department of Transportation projects where we need to have match for, Main Street reconfiguration and a police parking lot. This all came from work we've done through the ad hoc process and then also in conversations with the various departments. We wanted to just tease out and flag various projects that we see on the horizon. So, these projects, either in design or they're under a feasibility study, or we need to start designing, getting direction from you all as to how we want to move forward is going to be critical, and it's one of the goals that I'm hoping to accomplish this fall. So, newer projects, not part of the ad hoc process, but, you know, have developed since we've met, or we understand are necessary, is a fire training facility upgrade. You know, we've hearing about an annual sidewalk repair plan needed and, you know, two public pools need repair, HVAC library controls, and that's, of course, depending on how the larger library project unfolds, and a truck wash if it's not incorporated into the DPW garage. So, again, these would be the type of projects we would be looking to hear from you all as to where they fit in based off of the existing known priorities that we have. So, I'm going to kick it over to Treasurer Enright to talk through our five-year debt service plan.
Thank you. Dawn Enright, Treasurer. So, the schedule in front of you is a general obligation bond sale plan. The projects at the top that are listed under approved resolutions, these are resolutions that have already been approved for these projects to move forward. When it's authorized, we do not necessarily sell all of the amount in the next year. What we do is we wait and see what the spend planned is, and we schedule out when we're going to sell those portions. So, you can see for the ones that are already authorized, we've already made a plan for the next five years, how we're going to sell those authorizations according to how we feel the spend is going to happen. Then, you have projects underneath that Director Cummings had spoken about, that we feel out of the ad hoc committee, these were priorities. So, we've conceptualized the amount that we anticipate needed for those projects. These have not been approved by the Board of Alderman as of yet. But with those, we are conceptualizing the amount and the years in which we would need to sell those bonds if we were to move forward with these projects. So, you can see under the subtotal, it tells you how much each year we anticipate to sell for new issue that will show up in the fiscal year, which is in the top of the column. Fiscal year '27, we anticipate the $17.65 million of debt service, the amount to pay down, will show in the '27 budget the first year, and so forth as it goes forward. Now, the, under the subtotal, it talks about the $25 million target that was talked about in the ad hoc committee. And with inflationary 3%, we added that to that to give us a benchmark as to where we can anticipate what that $25 million is going to look like year over year so that we can stay within the guidelines recommended through the ad hoc. If you look at the total five-year actual, the third to last line on the bottom, it's showing that $114 million will be issued, will be sold in the five years, which is less than the five-year projected with the inflationary of $140 million. So, our plan is to stay within the guidelines of the ad hoc committee, and that is our goal, to stay within that plan.
So, I'm just going to toggle to the next chart because I think it's really important because they're both linked together. So, Treasurer Enright, could you talk a little bit about this chart?
Certainly. Thank you. So, this chart here gives you the debt service over the next 10 years, but also incorporates the additional debt that would be for a total of 20 years. So, out to 2046, you can see that the debt service, we're trying to keep it as consistent as possible year over year so that the debt service that is budgeted and authorized each year does not make a major impact change on the budget. So, we're starting with fiscal year '26 of $23.7 million. That first column of current debt service, that was the first slide that we showed you with all the numbers on it. Those are the current debt that we have, and it's decreasing year over year, leaving a capacity for the coming years to be able to add to it. '27, we're adding $1.5 million of debt service to the total. So, in fiscal year '27, we'll be looking at $23.8 million in the budget, and so forth, going forward all the way through to '46.
And Treasurer Enright, can you talk a little bit about these assumptions that you made, just so we're clear? I believe these are 20 years at 4%?
The additional debt service, yes. The assumption that was made there is each year, year over year, we're looking at $25 million at a 3% increase year over year, starting with fiscal year '31 and going forward. So, each year, all the way out to the 20 years, we've made the assumption that we're going to stay within the guidelines of the $25 million plus the 3% year over year.
And so, what we're trying to call your attention to is we want to try to get this to hover between 3% and 5% year over year. This is kind of what we're working toward. And then, in, you know, in that '30-'31 timeframe, you know, you have capacity coming into place where we could layer in additional debt and be able to accommodate it without really driving too much in terms of new debt that would erode capacity. And so, that's something that we wanted to kind of tease out and get a sense from you all as to where we think we will be relative to projects on the horizon so we can start to build our plan accordingly, so we can add this additional projects in when we have capacity. Something to kind of note, you'll see that, you know, this year, we're only around 17, probably could get that up a little bit higher. We're really low on the percentage, but in the future year, we're at like 7%. So, if we could pull that forward a little bit, that would help us immensely start to smooth out this trend line here. But of course, we need to make sure we have confidence in the projects we got on the horizon here, and that folks want to move in this direction so we're being good stewards of the tax dollar. And so, these are the conversations we'll be looking to have over the coming months. So, we should remind you all that what we would like to do is authorize new debt when we're doing the budget, and so we would be looking for this next spring. To be able to do that, we really need to have a conversation about what projects we see on the horizon over the next five years. So, we should look to try to get the ad hoc committee together again in a late fall, early winter. Something we should tease out now is understand what the appetite may be to authorize additional debt during the fall season with whatever available surplus we may have. And that's something that I would raise as a question because we only have about $1.4 million available to us through our capital improvement program in our operating budget, and it's something that we may want to look at increasing over future years, but as of right now, we're hovering in that $1.4 million range, and we know that we're trying to bond projects once they get above $1.5 million. So, something to think about as we move forward, how we want to work all these differing variables into a cohesive plan. And lastly, just as a reminder, we're talking about new debt over a five-year horizon of $25 million on average. So, some years may be a little bit higher, some years may be a little bit lower, but we're trying to keep it about $25 million on average per year over a five-year universe. So, Madam President, I just wanted to kind of go through this with you this evening very quickly and kind of talk through some of the, open it up to questions and talk through some of the details now if time allows.
Well, we have 10 minutes. Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. So, $25 million, that's a lot of debt. Like, if that was my debt, you know, obviously, I wouldn't be able to pay it back. So, can you explain how a city works? Like, shouldn't we try to get to zero, or is there a reason why we carry so much debt year to year? How does that impact taxes?
I'm going to hand that over to Treasurer Enright.
Dawn Enright, Treasurer. So, you really want...
Can I make a statement? There's going to be some overflow. I mean, we're not going to be able to fit too many more people in this room. Donna has arranged for people to be in the rotunda downstairs, even though there's no seating. You can sit on the stairs. I don't know how long you're going to want to sit here, but with all the people standing, I think it might be more comfortable. You'll be able to hear us, Donna?
Yes.
If your name gets called to speak. I just wanted to throw that out there. I'm sorry, Treasurer Enright. Continue.
No problem. Thank you. So, you really want to manage your debt well and try to stay as consistent as possible year over year. You do not want to eliminate your debt because you want to have good credit, just like an individual wants to have good credit. We need our debt so that we can continually sell our bonds on the open market. That is what's looked at, how we manage our debt to be able to get the good bond ratings. So, to get it to zero, it's not realistic, but to manage it at a consistent level is a responsible way to manage your debt.
Alderman Tebow.
Yeah, thank you. Just to follow up, because the second part of that question was, how does that impact the taxes, having debt like that, the tax rate?
It does impact the taxes because 1.5 million is 1% on the taxes, so it does affect the taxes, but if it stays consistent, it doesn't increase the taxes. If we were not diligent on the sale of the bonds, and as soon as it's authorized, we sell it immediately, some of these projects are much larger in cost, then we would be all over the scale year over year on what we're selling. In some years, we'd sell $50 million worth of debt. The next year, we're only selling 17, so you're going to see a decrease, and then you're going to see an increase depending on how you sell it. So, it's more important how we sell it and manage our projects because there are rules around how long we can fund it with cash before we have to sell it and be able to refund ourselves. So, we manage that on every single project to make sure that we are doing the best we can, keeping in mind what is going to be needed in the budget for debt service.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. I'm looking for some clarification, please, because when I see in this presentation existing debt, I go to the budget book where it says total general obligation bonds of 77 million, not 23 million. So, are we, help me out. Is this 23 plus 77, or is that included in there?
Treasurer Enright?
Thank you. Yes, the budget is showing total debt outstanding, including our enterprise funds, and the enterprise funds are paid for out of fees. So, the 23 million is in that 71.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. Also, for clarification, when you say issued and you say sold, are those terms interchangeable, or does one mean something different to you?
Let me just ask for a clarification. Are you referring to issued as authorized?
I want to know how you look at it.
So, let me jump in on this because this is something that Treasurer Enright and I discuss regularly. So, from my perspective, they're two distinct items here, and you use the word issue. I'm going to substitute that and use the word authorized. And authorized just means that we have the right, the legal ability, to be able to pursue debt for a particular project. But then, when it actually comes to actually issuing the debt, selling the debt, that is a separate thing. And so, and that is when we're talking about it coming and affecting our debt service. And ultimately, what we're trying to do here, rough numbers, is our debt service is approximately $15 million, I believe, year over year, and we're trying to keep that roughly stable.
All set, Alderman Sullivan?
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. Real quickly, I'm looking at your last slide here where you kind of seek out whether or not there would be an appetite to authorize additional spending during the fall using surplus. Is that a consideration that would be made at the ad hoc committee? And if so, would it be prudent to maybe have the ad hoc committee meet sooner than the late fall? Because this is something, that's actually something I was going to ask in conjunction with another bond authorization that's out there right now, is whether or not this committee is planning to meet sooner rather than later.
Director Cummings.
Yeah, I don't believe the ad hoc committee needs to come together to answer that very specific question because we already have a litany of projects identified. The question is whether you want us to pursue using debt for that, or if you want us to use available cash for just the projects that we kind of know about on the horizon. You know, we got some of these imminent projects that are on the horizon that we could, you know, think about using cash for to move the projects along without issuing debt, as an example. We know that there is, I'll just go to the next slide here. We know that there is, you know, both a library and a fire station that are needed, and instead of issuing debt, we could just use cash to fund the design, which is where these projects would be at. We've already issued design monies, not enough to do the entire project for the library, but we haven't issued any type of design monies for the fire station. If these are projects of note nor of desire, then we may want to look at using cash to do the design portion without issuing debt. You could also look to use it for, you know, continuing the study for Passenger Rail, the ERP system, placemaking, police parking lot. These would all be projects that would be at a level where, you know, using cash may be appropriate instead of issuing debt, but really, the biggest thing is it would trigger a supplemental appropriation, you know, and that's the question is whether you'd want to trigger a supplemental appropriation to authorize that type of use with cash.
Alderman Senate.
Yeah, thank you for that answer, Director Cummings. I think wherever that conversation has to happen, whether it's in committee or in front of the full board, what my desire would be is just to take what you just contemplated and get that firm line where we want to attack projects with cash and where we want to consider bond authorizations. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, thank you, Director Cummings. Thank you, Treasurer Enright. Appreciate your update today.
Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
The motion is to adjourn the special board meeting. Would the clerk please call the roll by roll call? Yes.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
We're adjourned at 7:30 PM. We will start our next meeting in, huh?
Five minutes.
Five minutes. Yep.